Good evening, everyone. Go ahead and call the meeting order at this time. Please turn off all cell phones, electric devices to vibrate or off please. Mr. Ark, will you please lead us in our prayer and pledge as he can serve?
Father God, we are so thankful for your many blessings and love for us. I pray that you will guide us today, that we might make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of Ballinger and within your will. Please give us strength and wisdom. Praise this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge to Jesus is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ark. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the July 17th, 2017 meeting, please.
Make the motion that we accept the minutes with the motion to correct.
Now, the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. If anyone here is not on the agenda, wish to use speaker. And now, everybody just.
I'm gonna take a minute just.
Yes, sir.
Just want to show the council something. We were talking to you a while back, our ladies, I think at the last meeting, we're talking at the sidewalks.
Yeah.
I've got something I want to show y'all, just kind of give you an option to think about. Yeah.
... and cause the concrete surface to fall, wear, and disheveling. Quikrete concrete resurfacer can provide a new, durable, wear-resistant surface on old, warm concrete driveways, sidewalks, and caddies that will last like your concrete. Quikrete concrete resurfacer will renew your concrete surface and fractionally cause deterioration to replace old concrete slabs. As with any concrete repair project, proper surface preparation is essential for a successful result. This is especially true for concrete resurfacing. Old concrete must be rigorously cleaned to ensure the proper adhesion of the new surface. A high-strength 3,500 psi pressure washer must be used to remove any dirt, oil, grease, or deteriorated concrete prior to the application of concrete resurfacing. Concrete resurfacer is ideal for resurfacing large areas like driveways, caddies, and pool decks, but because it sets quickly, it is important to section off your work areas to no larger than 144 square feet. This will allow enough time for placing and finishing the resurfacing before it begins to settle. It's essential that control joints and expansion joints are maintained to allow for slab movement. These joints can usually be used to define your work area. Another striping can be used to prevent concrete.
Scarefying machines apply cutting tools to compact surfaces, leaving a clean, textured or roughed finish. These versatile machines have various styles of interchangeable cover segments that can be used for heavy removal, cleaning, or texture. Eggos, blue tongs, and carbide cutters are the most popular accessories used for aggressive removal. They are popular because of their aggressiveness and long life. The scare cutters are available in flat duty or pointy form and can remove up to 60 feet of an inch of path. We have several models of scarefiers, starting with the CPM-8. This machine has an 8-inch working width and is available in gas or electric. With carbide cutters, the CPM-8 will scare by 300 to 500 square feet per hour. Many municipalities use the CPM-8 for leveling for paths. It's also great for coating removal, floor cleaning, and rapid lacquer. The CPM-10 is designed most like the CPM-8 and is used for aggressive removal of concrete, asphalt, and coating. The CPM-10 has a 10-inch working width and is bigger than the CPM-8. The 8-inch Scare Lite Mini Platter is an electric 110-volt machine that's great for removing paint, urethane, bidet set, and other coatings. The Scare Lite is lightweight, easy to operate.
So would you use the scare fire and then come back to the?
Well, you can't. These grinding machines go for the concrete to drop down, you know, and the splices. You can use a grinding machine to grind off the trip pattern, you know. I saw them all that, where they grind off an inch, you know, for, it's not a ledge anymore now, it's just a small rack, you know. And I just wanted y'all to see it, kind of give you something to think about. Other than, you know, taking advice, tearing down sidewalks, because they've got all types of new farmers from water now, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there that can be used to repair instead of replacing.
Steve, you don't know cost like purple off or?
No, what they, you know, there's many different types of machinery. Now, the machines, as they said there, gas, alloy, powered, both about the same cost. It started about $3,500, you know, and goes up, you know. But then you've got, you know, blades, grinding.
Yes, you're talking about the scare fire.
Yeah.
Concrete over concrete.
Yeah, yeah, that's the resurfacing, you know, and there's all the preparation that you have to do, you know, good cleaning, you can get good bonding agents, you know, and, yeah, just a lot of.
It's awesome. I appreciate you explaining this.
Now, I have to say, just something kind of concerning, we're looking at the sidewalks.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
No, sir. You're not on the agenda. No, sir. No, sir.
Let me say something back again.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you for hearing me through last meeting, and with that cleanout being installed, I feel like perhaps maybe my sewer problems will often reach the level of animosity they have in the past. I appreciate y'all hearing me out. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I apologize for the miscommunication as far as the agenda goes.
Don't think that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, discuss and act on a resolution authorized in the Veterans Day parade for November 11th, 2017. Make that motion. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's on Saturday.
They already contacted y'all as far as for checking?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Say will now.
Yeah, say will now.
All right, considering, discuss and or take action to authorize city manager to seek proposals for administrative services and engineering services for our downtown revitalization program 2017.
This is, in the wake of Ms. Plant's presentation at the last council meeting, as per bill of instructions, I contacted Ken Martin about downtown, about sidewalk replacement in downtown areas. He keyed me into this program, which I knew about, but I didn't necessarily had it around. And it's through Texas Department of Agriculture, and is up to $300,000 for downtown removal. We would be responsible for the engineering, but the grant would cover all.
Is it a long way or does it be also resurfaced?
We can resurface, we can do a number of things, depending on what the engineering study comes back and says.
$300,000 resurfacing can go along.
I've heard that we do. I have a scheduled meeting for Wednesday morning with a grant holder named Kay Howard, who I have worked with in the past. At one point, she was a competitor of mine, and Kay has been very successful in giving these creative funds in Coleman. I know they've got one, I think the mayor already received the second one, and so she's very knowledgeable, and the way it typically works is we'll have a resolution at the next meeting, and this will allow us, allow me to send letters out, do all the upfront work. You guys will pass a resolution, we will not commit any money unless we are actually funded, so it doesn't cost us anything upfront, and the only time we spend money is maximum private takes place. I think it's a win-win, and I think it's worth, worth the time to put into it to see if we get a solution.
Ryan, could you challenge Steve to look into a cost per area that we can relate with on this resurfacing?
Okay, yes, sir.
Did you get that, Steve? I think that's the one thing that came up.
Sure.
You know, some.
I don't have to go off. We were gonna, I'm gonna have that discussion with you tomorrow. We're actually, you know, do we buy the machine, do we rent the machine, you know, should we get Quikrete in bulk versus just on sacks?
What, the machine you're talking about, scare fire?
Yes.
The other options also there?
Yes.
Well, I think both of them would be necessary because we depend close, right? But honestly, I think the point was valid that we had more people downtown than we had since I lived here. I mean, there's a lot of traffic downtown compared to what it was in 2009 when I lived here, so, you know.
Pretty long. Sales tax.
Everybody get a pair. All right, do I have a motion to authorize city manager to seek proposals?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, consider approval of billing permits, that's nice.
You have one.
You have one, 'cause I guess I didn't see one.
Marianne Spiker with 405 Lorden, she wants to build a 10, 10-foot little store building. She owns probably about half a block up there, and I'm sure there's any problem with.
You're good, fine.
All ready to send back the digi?
Yes.
Make the motion for approval of that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, here's the police activity monthly report from Chief Scramler, R.
Well, through the month of July, we had 383 calls for service, nine twin arrests, none of them being drug-related, four accidents, 80 citations, and almost $6,000 in fines. It hasn't slowed down a whole lot during the June, but we've hired another officer, Barbara Garcia, started a couple weeks ago, these in our SDO program that we speak, and hopefully he'll go through and pass and be full set. I do have a vehicle down. Don't know if it's gonna come back a lot, so, I'm worried. They talk a lot.
We.
Yeah.
Which, which one is?
This is the oldest one.
Oh, let me see, the oldest one.
Maybe the oldest one. Luckily, it's the oldest one.
So.
Now, I'm looking to see how much it's gonna cost to repair, if it's able to be repaired.
It's worth it. I asked, I asked Scotty that question about 3:30 this afternoon, and I think he quit laughing about 3:45. Which, I don't, I don't know exactly what happened to the truck, to the charger, excuse me.
Check it, the officer Mercer said the check engine light came on, took it down in the city shop, and they said it was an injector that was out. They fixed the injector, drove down the road, alternator popped fire, shorted out the whole car. It's off.
The standard budget was $6,000 for vehicle repair?
Uh, that's not what I'm cutting down.
Injured 14?
Yes.
Is this all part of this scenario?
No, a lot of that was from, for some reason, all our brakes had to be replaced on them. The three condos that we got altogether, they're gonna get them the same mileage area, and all their brakes needed to be replaced, front end needed to be replaced on all the chargers, you know, it just hit all of a sudden.
I did talk to John Powell and Todd Powell with USDA last week, two weeks ago in Ranger, and there is some money still left on the table for the grant funds. It's essentially, you buy a car, they get you, they buy you a car. It's a two-for-one program that we've used in the past, and they still have some grant funds available, and so I was going to visit with them to get, just get our name on the hat and see if something pops, but that requires council approval to do that.
Now, I'm looking at a cheaper route, trying to find a cheaper route, instead of trying to go through the vendor supply in Dallas for a vehicle. So, there is a lot that I have on that lot, so, now I think it might end up being cheaper in the long run. That's about all I have.
Still, I'm a little confused on Unit 06 having 170,467 miles in July.
That was, that's a mistake, because we get the mileage from top sync. That's when we swapped out vehicles and then they forgot to change their unit number, and so now that number is not accurate. I thought we fixed it, but it's not.
But we know why it's there. But you know why it's there?
Yeah.
Quite sure.
But my system is wrong, so I choose different route.
Is it correct? All right, good, thank you, sir. All right, here's the city administrator's bi-weekly report, please.
Okay, you have your financials in front of you. We're still shorting the waterfront. Our revenues are down about $60,000 compared to last year, but I do know that we did increase our collections for the period from June 15th to July 15th, which are now due today or this week. That's up to about $145,000 from $120,000 in the previous period, and so we're slowly but surely climbing ourselves out of that one. Our general fund's a little bit up, we did buy some material, we're buying base at an alarming rate, we can't seem to keep it on the ground. We had a number of water leaks for the last couple weeks that required our base to go into those leaks, and that's, a haul truck broke down two weeks ago?
Yes.
We just got it out of the shop Friday, and so we are hauling base and getting those things back. Any questions on financials?
Ryan, sir. There were expenditures on the communication?
That was, I believe that's gonna be for air conditioner replacements.
Oh, okay.
I noticed that too when I was going through this statement, it's about $5,000 acres.
And?
Airport lighting?
Airport lighting, we had a number of lights that were, we had a number of lights that were not working at the airport, like 10, I think it was more than that, which made it very difficult for pilots to lay the night, and we had to replace those.
So, budget $100, which you don't have $600?
There's, there were some communication issues with the former airport manager.
Bobby?
Yeah, there was a number of issues we've had at the airport that I think we resolved last month.
And I was looking at sidewalk and through this budget.
Tree treatment. We treat, we trim trees.
Or was that it?
Yes, sir.
And you're $5970.
Yes, sir. That was at the request of a number of businesses on that chance. Any, any other questions on finances? The budget schedule is still the same, we're gonna run the ad on the 24th, which means I'll get them the ad on the 16th. We will have a meeting on the 5th, I believe we're gonna have a meeting on the 12th, and then we will adopt the budget on September the 18th. That's the schedule we set out a couple weeks ago, I guess everybody's still okay with that, 'cause that's what's put on the paper. We'll meet at 5:15 for budget and tax, people can come in and make comments on either one. As we discussed previously, the ad will have us going up to the rollback rate, although I do not anticipate us actually going up to the rollback rate, I'm gonna give us some flexibility in there. Right now, the budget that I have, I plan on giving you guys a preliminary budget at the next meeting. The budget that I have does not have a revenue increase on park pay taxes, does not have a revenue increase on park pay taxes. I need to visit with the tax office to make sure that their formula, their effective rate formula that they got back to me, I found a discrepancy, and I don't know if my math is wrong or if theirs was, but I'm gonna double-check that before we go forward, but you'll see that at the next meeting. Park paving, as I mentioned, our haul truck went down, we got it out of the shop, and so we're hauling base. We anticipate opening up that road tomorrow afternoon for through traffic, and that's gonna have base, it's gonna be what they would call a dirt road or a footy road, but we want them to drive on it, we want them to pound it down, and we want them to hard it up so we can shoot it with rock. At that point, we plan on finishing the remainder of the park. Visiting with Scotty today, it's going to be tricky. Most of the streets in Ballinger are straight and they're the same width across from block to block, but the park goes, starts out at 32 feet, goes down to 24 feet, goes out to 32 feet, and comes back down, and it's going to be a little difficult on the paving side, so it's gonna be a little bit more time-consuming to finish the park. We also had moved the cleanout for the sewer system, the dump RV for RVs, we moved that away from the side to hill, if you will, to across the street, and we are, we're going to add a little swingway through for the RVs and buses, and try to make it a little safer as well, but that's moving on. We had planned to do work in front of Becky Ferguson's house, is that Broad Avenue? Is that right? We were going to do work in front of Becky's house, but Atmos has informed us that they don't know, and this is a quote, "We don't know where they're gonna go when they're done, until they're done on that side of the tracks." So they're finishing all of South Ballinger and that area, and then they have no idea where they're gonna start on the north side of town. And so, being that we're late in season, getting late in season, I anticipate us doing the park and maybe a couple of side streets where we know they're not gonna replace gas lines for sure, and then hopefully Atmos can move faster if they're moving now. To be honest with you, I'm frustrated with their progress, I think, I think they're about a month behind where they should be, but I know they're working as fast and diligently as they possibly can. We did, I did have a number of discussions with Joe's Plumbing and Moore Plumbing about some of the issues that we've got. I've got some clarification on their end of it, I clarified our point on their end of it. I think there was miscommunication between plumber, customer, and city, and then city reacting to that and coming back to the plumber. We, we seem to have worked our issues out with those folks, and I think, I think all parties are happy and agreeable to what we've, the resolutions we've come to. Downtown, if you notice, we bought it, the chamber had purchased a number of trash cans and ditches, and one of the projects we're gonna do is install those in the next couple, in the upcoming weeks. The goal is to have them out by the end of the day, so when the fall shopping season gets here, it'll look, it'll look a little bit nicer. If you haven't seen them, they're down at Quonset Bar, and I think they look great, but I'm kind of biased towards that. We have one more major project to do in this fiscal year, we gotta replace the water filters at the water plant, although Randy seems to think that we can get those maybe into November or December, but we're looking at replacing those filters out there. TML, I'm going to a small cities problem-solving clinic on the 18th, if anybody wants to go, it's in Stanford, Texas, home of the Bulldogs, 15 miles north of a former place, I guess. If anybody wants to go, let me know, and I'll get you registered for the, for the meeting. Bob is the same one we went to, right?
Okay, so people will be there?
I don't know if your friend will be there.
Have to answer your questions.
I'm just, that's on YouTube. See, see, the people on YouTube will see that, and then I'm gonna be answering the questions.
That may go.
I may be heading to Austin on the 9th of November. TML sent out an email this morning. I don't know if y'all are aware of comments that the lieutenant governor has made on Fox News over the weekend, but essentially, you all are the reason why America is no longer great. It's not the state government, it's not the better government, it's global cities. And so, I guess we gotta go make Ballinger great again for sure.
Well, that's almost as good as him saying that they're gonna cut scope funding and all about the way we discharge taxes.
Yes.
Which is a mathematically difficult proposition.
Yes.
Same, George.
Same, George. If you get to create your own math, then I guess you can create your own reality.
Right. Well, yeah.
There's a number of issues involved that are coming up in the last 10 days of the session. I threw that in there in jest, but I kind of give you the idea that, you know, I didn't realize E. W. Fuentes was the reason America's not great.
Sorry.
But, TML has my support, I think it probably has your support as well, you did a great job for us, and they support as well, and you represent as well the legislature, and so when they call us to come out and testify or whatnot, I think we should, we ought to them to do those things. That is my report. Any questions?
Ryan, I'm a freshman, remember, I'm gonna have to go back on this, what is the status of, I think we went past the deadline that was extended our back depository contract?
Yes, yes, I need to develop a draft contract.
I'll do something like that.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll, I'll develop a draft contract proposal, and I'll, I'll put it out to.
That will be.
Yes, sir, it will have to be. The qualifications, they have to be a bank that's located in Ballinger, so that limits the three, that, technically, the credit union, I think they can put in for it, although I don't think there are any requirements to do that. So it'll be between Phil and Greg. I had a very interesting conversation with Greg about the depository contract. It, it's, there's a lot of liability on their side if they were to assume that, they'd have to back our, our deposits with cash mostly, and that's sometimes problematic for space, but I haven't talked to Greg about it. It's on my radar to do.
Good, thanks.
And, and it will be done before the fiscal year kicks in, and I, and I'd like to line those things up on October 1st, so when it expires in five years, we can simply do that when we do what's called cleanup with all the other.
And did we go past the deadline or something? Had a deadline? Was there a deadline?
There was a five-year deadline, it was in June, and I was fully unaware of the deadline, and Phil called me and said, "We're going to expire," and I said, "Okay." Called me on Friday, we expired Sunday, "What do you wanna do?" And I said, "I want a six-month extension starting Monday," and we'll continue in the same. We sent them a letter a couple weeks ago with the dance meeting saying, "We're extending the agreement for another six months until we can put this back."
Questions, concerns, comments, issues?
I am frustrated with that, I'm just, I'm trying to share it, but I am frustrated with I am frustrated with that, I'm just, I'm trying to share, but I am frustrated with that because we have a number of residents and citizens who want street pay being done, and I don't blame them at all. It's very difficult for Scott, myself, Steve, to tell a citizen when we're gonna do their road at all. Um, as I explained to Becky, and, and I, I think council understands this is more for the people watching on YouTube, it's a, we spend a lot of money doing street repair. And if we were to do Becky Ferguson's block, which we need to do, the grass has taken over about ten, fifteen percent of it already, we're moving that street, but if we were to do that block in September, and they come back even in January, December, and they rip that street out, I've wasted sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and, and so, that's my frustration with, with that.
And cop to shell?
We, we did a cop to shell the, uh, Monday, uh, in the San Angelo, the, the lawmakers on that. That's my report.
You ready? Here request for future agenda items from city council. Anybody do anything that needs to be put on the agenda?
Oh, one last thing, so this is going to be off there. Um, we'll have the local petition election on the twenty-first, that should come up, uh, on our agenda. Um, the, the local, uh, liquor election, um, that's going to be, uh, verification of signatures, and you get it on the ballot. Um, I cannot make comments, uh, one way or another in support or for, or support for or against, um, the, the election, I can simply speak to facts, and so I, I will not engage in conversations, uh, as far as those things go. But as council members, you are free to say whatever you want to, but as staff, we do not say. So, good. Okay, I don't need to have some really interesting opinions on.
All right, nobody spoke on the future agenda?
No, he answered my question.
Okay. All right, boundary city council, assuming executive session is authorized by a Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven, and a special city attorney, update on alternative water deposits.